Good evening. This is a continuation of the April 12th Board of Education meeting. We have four board members present, three absent. The Board has been in closed session for employment of employee, the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the district, and the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the district, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. With that, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next topic is public comments. Are there any public comments tonight? Laura? Hi.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Laura Youngren. I'm a relatively new resident of Elmhurst, two or four years, and my children are not yet even in District 205. I'm also a private speech-language pathologist that works with many children who are either already in the district or will be entering the district, so I feel compelled to stay educated regarding the district for both professional and personal reasons. I do not pretend to know what is best for the district or the ins and outs of the district, and I realize that tough decisions are always going to have to be made and that there is no way to please everyone. I have been to the Board of Education meetings and have listened actively, but only after the last Board meeting did I feel compelled to publicly speak. What made me feel most compelled to speak were the community speakers during last meeting that frequently publicly denounced all of the social media discussions. It was uncomfortable to listen to and that I felt that the portrayal was unfair, and the comparison between teaching our children appropriate social media behavior and the discussion of the district on social media was grossly inaccurate. As I stated above, I consider myself a neutral, active listener. To date, I have yet to see any discussions on the Facebook groups that have not been accurate facts. Yes, there may be an advocacy tone to the Facebook page, and clearly there are trust issues, but what exactly is the misinformation that has been discussed? I have found the social media sites to be very helpful places to get well-thought-out, researched information. These sites have also encouraged me to come to meetings so that I could make my own educated decisions. I'm a working mother, and my children are not yet attending elementary school. Therefore, coffee with the superintendent and PTA meetings are not feasible methods for me to gain information. Here is where I stand as someone who doesn't personally currently have skin in the game, so to speak. This notion that we, the residents, not the administrators, the Board, or the PTA members or the teacher union, are the cause for hysteria and turmoil, in my opinion, is absurd and insulting. Let's think back to the "as-is" and Field Emerson disasters to remember why the community began really paying attention in the first place. Had it not had been for the active parent and community involvement regarding these decisions, which I continue to feel were deeply inappropriate and troubling, these decisions would have gone through without any changes. The same could be said about Math Club. There are very valid concerns regarding the possible changes that could be made in the district, and frankly, Dr. Moore does not appear to be doing much to repair the trust that has been damaged. A great example was his very flippant description of the Buddy Bench from the Lincoln Dads Group. Yes, it was probably harmless, but it continues to perpetuate the feelings of lack of respect for our community's children, and it is coming from the district's leader. At this point, I will be watching what is going on with the district very closely. I will be asking lots and lots of questions, and then I will be making my own conclusions. I will not be made to feel ashamed for having active, educated discussions on social media, and I will be setting an example for my children about the importance of being an active member of our community, rather than sitting back and just allowing decisions to be made and then complaining about the results. Thank you.
Carol Landau?
Good evening. I'm Carol Landau. I had planned to speak at the last meeting, but unfortunately did not get here in time to sign up to do so. That time, I had planned to talk about what we're teaching our kids and also what our kids are learning not just from us parents, but from the examples set by our leaders. So I'd really like us to think about, you know, what are our superintendent and our district leaders teaching our children? Some of the lessons I've seen so far are that it's okay to discriminate against others and to silence their voices if we think that they're different, an example being "as-is." It's okay to shift the blame and not accept responsibility for our choices and actions by blaming New York principle for "as-is," for the decision on class sizes, and blaming the Board for the poor handling of Field Emerson kids because supposedly we weren't given the money to do it. It's okay to keep people's voices from being heard. Again, some examples, "as-is," the parents of the Field Emerson children who tried so desperately to advocate in a timely manner on their kids' behalf, telling students, like in the International Club, that they, you know, basically giving them one-sentence response as to why their wishes couldn't be heard, telling them not to come to the Board of Education meeting to make those wishes heard, not listening to parents' concerns on the middle-school task force. We're teaching our kids not to acknowledge and recognize children and community members for their efforts. It's okay to be dismissive for your own actions, as in "as-is," International Club, advocacy efforts of Field Emerson parents, and the Buddy Bench. I agree, that was totally inappropriate. And it's okay to take advantage of the most vulnerable in our community who may not have a voice. Again, the Field Emerson example. I'd like to just respond to what we are teaching. There was a lot of talk from PTA representatives who appeared to be representing themselves as PTA council, but who were actually speaking on their own behalf. I want to make that very clear. They did not represent the voices of all of the PTA members. I'm very proud of what we're teaching our children. We're teaching them to be a part of a process and to be active. If they want something to change, they have to be part of making that change. Speak up for yourself. Speak up for others who may not have a voice or are afraid to use that voice, and use the appropriate means to make your voice heard. Our only way to really communicate with the Board of Education is through vehicles like this. We're allowed to use social media to address issues and at least speculate, and then we come here to make our voices heard formally, because there's not another vehicle to do that. So I'm very proud of what people in this community have done on behalf of all of the children in the community, and I'm very proud to be a part of that process. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to reports and presentations. Our first presentation is National Merit Finalists. If we could have Diana Smith come and introduce the students.
It's a little different arrangement tonight. Yeah. Good evening, and to the members of the Board, thank you so much again for asking us to come in and be able to celebrate some students. I've explained to Robert and Julia, it's always awkward a little bit for students when they come up, because they have to just stand there while we talk about them. That's too bad, because we want you to just stand there while we're talking about you. But one of the things that I shared with them, and Malia knows this too, is we had a chance to introduce them to you last fall, because they were semifinalists, and all three have gone on to become finalists, and even hearing the news of scholarship money and things like that. But I asked Malia, I said, "Oh, we've got so many other seniors. Can I bring some other seniors along?" And she said, "We have so much on the agenda." And she said, "But if you want to mention a couple of other seniors, go ahead and do that." So I thought I'd just mention just a couple others, and Robert and Julia are in on this, so we'll take just a minute. So if you can take a look at the pictures, can you see them in the audience on the screen? So we just wanted to mention some seniors from the math team. It's funny, because I said it IAC today, I'm going to be at the Board meeting tonight. Is there any special senior you want me to recognize? Oh, boy, what a great problem to have, just inundated. From the math department, the math team seniors, that they wanted you to know about, because they've progressed to the highest achievement in the history of the conference. They took fifth in the conference this year and first in regionals, and the sponsors say they're actually the driving force behind the whole team going to state in May. Lucas Gao, Luke Videakis, Ian Dragunov, Jack Anderson, Brandon Parr, Eric Cummings, and Brennan McGovern. And then I thought we should think about the seniors from Les Mis. You should have your tickets for this. They're not actually all seniors, but at least three of the four, Brian Nadera, Chris Knutson, and Billy Bobin. And of course, Eric Martin's in the star, I couldn't leave him out, but make sure you get your tickets if you haven't already. Actually, I can't get any tickets. I hope you have your tickets, that's all I'm going to say. Also wanted to show you, I think so important for you to see, the leaders from our student council, because these are the seniors that make up all but two that skipped out, I think, for a little early lunch. But the seniors that are on student council, they have so much to do with what happens at York in terms of school spirit and our activities and planning our dances and even graduations, so the committee that is planning commencement. But they are also very, very busy right now, just finishing their own year. But what a great thing for the Board to be able to see the leaders that are now going on, and I'm sure will have leadership positions in their own colleges. And I know from the Board, because you know a lot of these kids, and I think the audience does as well, Alexandria Cahill, who's going to George Washington University for international affairs, Kelly Pulte, who's going to Clemson to study food science, Alyssa Patty, who's choosing between USC and University of Wisconsin, Kayla Arroyo, who's choosing between Emory and the University of Iowa, Lauren Aloya, going to the University of Miami for biology, Alexis Holman is going to the College of DuPage, Maggie Schlecht is going to the University of Nebraska to study actual aerial science, Lydia Faber has decided on Wake Forest, she's looking into a medical field, Kenny Sadoric is going to Georgia Tech, Sarah Acosta is going to Illinois Wesleyan. And of course, you've got to be wondering, is there a connection between student council planning prom? The York people will know this. What's the connection between prom and Les Mis? Both sold out. So Les Mis is completely sold out, but prom, we learned today, it's the first time it's ever happened, prom is sold out at over 800 students. What a great problem to have. And post-prom, sponsored by our PTSA, at over 700 students, is also sold out. So we're back to Navy Pier, asking them, begging them, to let us bring more students to prom. What a great problem to have. And then the other student that I know you'll recognize, many of you, is our student body president, Grace Akapole. And I mention her because she's involved in so many different things, student council and so forth. I love these pictures of her. She's a water polo champion, competes all over the country, but also is a tremendous student and leader. She's attending Stanford, she's decided on Stanford, just committed there, where she's going to study human biology. She was the nominee from York to be the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrator Scholarship nominee for being a top athlete and scholar as well. And she and Julia Dirkscheidey were nominated for the President's Scholarship Award, and this is the top tier of students nationwide that are nominated. A different president, the President of the United States, and there are very, very few students that qualify for that honor and that scholarship, so she and Julia were there as well. I also wanted you to just see a quick picture of Elizabeth Hagstrom. And Elizabeth Hagstrom and Robert Tomaska were nominated for the IHSA All-Academic Team. This is the top 25 students in the state. They were not named to the team, but were named honorable mention, which ranks them in the top 50 scholar-athletes in the state of Illinois, and to have two from York is just a tremendous honor. So Robert and also Elizabeth. And one of the things I thought you should know about Elizabeth, she credits, when I ask, I like to ask the students who they credit along the way, so we can figure out how do we, like, bottle up what's happening for these students and learn from them. And one of the things Elizabeth said is that she credits her grade-school teacher, Mrs. Ryan. She said that she was always supportive, taught her great study skills, which I thought was such a beautiful thing. And she also said, "Miss Iverson," her social studies teacher at York, and she said she challenged us to think about things differently and forced us to grow. And I thought that was such a cool thing to say. Elizabeth is going to study history and French and wants to come back and teach at the high school, and hopefully York as well. So that's Elizabeth. I also wanted to just mention, I'm going, Amanda Healy and Matt DeJesus, and they're the nominees this year for the DuPage County Illinois Principals Association Leadership Award. Two tremendous students, Mrs. Harold and I know. Amanda from the York Advisory Team, just a strong student, strong leader. Matt is just one of, I'm sure many people in the room know Matt, but a great student, a great leader. He is away this week, competing at Nationals in cheerleading with his cheerleading club. So wanted to make sure that you had a chance to see them as well. I also wanted to introduce you, if you don't know, Adora Nam. And Adora has just been, just received a bronze and silver medal in the AXO competition. And it's a competition that I believe the Board's aware of, doesn't have anything to do with ACT, but it's sponsored by the NAACP, and it is an Academic Cultural Technological and Scientific Olympics. It's a year-long achievement program that is designed to recruit and stimulate and encourage achievement among African-American students. And she won a bronze in medicine and a silver in poetry. She credits her fifth-grade teacher, Mr. Shields, which I thought was so interesting. We actually had two students that mentioned Mr. Shields. She said, "He's the kind of person, the kind of teacher that will inspire and motivate you, and he worked us so hard." And then at York, Mr. Schoenberg, Ms. Leahy in math, and Ms. Vigel in Westburg, she said, "I will always remember them," which I thought was great. She's going to be studying pre-med. And then a few other students that I thought you should be aware of that wouldn't have the chance in this small period of time. I'm so close, Malia, Malia's like. Axana Batrin, she is fluent. I don't know how many people here on the Cabinet or in the Board know her. She's fluent in Russian, French, Ukrainian, and English. She earned the State Seal of Bilinguality in Russian and French. She did not attempt to earn it in Ukrainian, which is so interesting. She just started studying English as a freshman in high school while still in the Ukraine, and she is now literate enough in both Russian and French to be able to teach in the state of Illinois in either language. This beautiful girl, I see her every day, Zainab Ahmed. She transferred to York from Pakistan in her junior year. She speaks English and Urdu, which is her native language, and she's going to study science and medicine. She's been a York Student Advisory Council member, and her cumulative GPA is a 4.3. She's an incredibly bright student and has a future, I think, in some kind of politics or leadership. So we wanted you to see Zainab, who is a great example of a transfer student that's done so well. And Anaya Brown, a lot of people know Anaya. When you see Anaya, she's a first-generation African-American female. Amy Thompson describes her as an incredibly strong personality, who is determined to succeed. She's going to study biomedical engineering in college. She is first in her family to go. She's involved in the Black Student Leadership Club, is on the York Dance Company and Italian Club, and also has a busy job outside of school. And then George Elias. George immigrated to the U.S. halfway through his sophomore year. It's a great story. You'll love this, Dr. Fitzgerald. Immigrated to the U.S. in his sophomore year from Egypt, and he said that he was very interested in engineering, and it came from playing with the sandals that he found in his house. He would construct a building out of them and use a rubber ball to go through each sandal without missing any of them, and it made him really get interested in how things were built and how things worked. And he started at York in KI Bio. Board members often say, "How can students move from one level to another?" He's probably the best example. He started in KIDAS Bio sophomore year and went all the way to physics honors, and he took pre-calculus over the summer. He's a freshman mentor. He's headed to Purdue, where he's going to be studying mechanical engineering. And now it's time to talk about you guys, and it's all the attention now. Our National Merit Finalists, and I know the Board will talk about this in a little bit, about what it means to be a National Merit semifinalist and finalist. I wanted to talk about the other students, just to give you a glimpse of all, some of the many wonderful seniors that we have this year. But we conclude by talking about our National Merit Finalists, which really, I think, these students very modestly demonstrate the strongest achievement in our senior class. And they started last fall, they rank in the top percent or two across the country of students that took the PSAT. And I'm going to say something a little bit differently than I did when I talked about them in the fall, but one of the things I do want to say is that Julia is the daughter of Elizabeth, who's here, and John, and sister to Carolyn, Linnea, and Christian. She attended Emerson and Churchville. She's a member of our orchestra and Badminton and the York Advisory Team. Julia, one of the things that I asked the three students, Natasha's not here tonight because she's being honored at the World Language event over at York right now, but one of the things I asked the students to share with me is who they credit for their success, what along the way. Julia said she received tremendous support from her parents and from her teachers and coaches. She said administrators, but I think you just said that to make me feel good, and her peers. And she said her parents have always been incredibly supportive, raising her to drive, with a drive to succeed, but never putting any negative pressure on her. She loves the way they've helped her to celebrate her accomplishments without establishing expectations, and she said there's never been a problem that they haven't been willing to help her solve. At the same time, she said they teach her by being a great example for her and talk about the importance of contributing to the community and giving back, which I've certainly been able to see. And she said, talking about her teachers, it's impossible for her to limit the number of teachers that have supported her along the way. She said every one of them has promoted and motivated her to challenge herself to get better. Ms. Moss and Ms. Van Hook specifically in biology, because that's her area of interest, Mr. Schoenberg and Ms. Leahy in math. And of course, her time on the York Advisory Team has been immeasurable, but she did say it's taught her the value of listening to the opinions of people to see a different angle. And you've got to love this, "Any music teachers in the audience? From orchestra, she learned the value of blending voices into a beautiful whole. And from Badminton, I learned how to be graceful in competition." That's so true. And she says thanks to York, but also to District 205 for all the support. So this is Julia Dirkscheidey. So Robert, and I've talked a little bit about some of the other things he's been recognized. Somebody said to me today, "He is so modest and humble about his success," and that's so true, both of them, all three, actually, when we've talked today. Robert is the son of Robert and Nancy, and brother to Catherine. He attended Jackson and Bryan. He's active in cross-country and many, many AP classes as well. He's going to study mechanical engineering. Perhaps he's still deciding, but I did want to mention that one of the possibilities is the University of Minnesota, because of the financial support they will provide him because of becoming a National Merit Finalist. It's been key. He said he's always, I said, "Where did you get interested in engineering?" And he said, "In middle school." He said, "I always liked math and science in middle school." And he said, "I always liked building stuff with my hands." I love this story. He said his dad has a lot of machinery and has taught him how to be mechanical and work with machines, and he said he loves and admires that his father enjoys so much what he does. So I had to ask him. He said in Boy Scouts, he really, like, built everything and was into it. I said, "So how about the Pinewood Derby? Those of you that have had a child in the Scouts..." With three sons, we made a ton of cars that never won anything, but I said, "How were you with the Pinewood Derby?" And he said, "We always had the best one, always." He was inspired by Mr. Shields at Jackson, is that right? At Jackson. He said he had high expectations for him in elementary school, but he said he also helped him to build the kind of study skills that he needed to be where he is today. So to go back and credit a grade-school teacher, I think, is such a beautiful testament to all the way along in the district, the support. And now with his coaches, he said he's had a million great teachers, but cross-country and track coaches, Newton and Kern. I said, "What have you learned from Mr. Newton?" And he said so many things, but I loved this. He said the life lessons of being a good person and respect, that those are so important. You learn those in a team, because that's what makes up a good team, and I really admire that. He also said he thanks his parents, who he believes have been so critical to him. His mom is here tonight. And he said, "They've done simply everything for me." And he said, "Always putting an emphasis on doing everything well." He said, "And always teaching me to follow through with my commitments." And then he said, "They're always home for me." And I said, "That's such an interesting thing to say." He said, "But I always know when I go home, they're going to be there, they're going to be with me, and they're to support me through the evening and on the weekends." He attended Jackson and Bryan. This is Robert Tomaska. And finally, Natasha Yarlagada. And Natasha couldn't be here with us the last time when we introduced the National Merit semifinalists, but tonight she's being recognized at the World Language Honor Society. She's the daughter of Srikanth Anuparna and sister to Karthik, who ended up going to the Math and Science Academy. She attended Field and Sandberg. She's an AP student in our marching and jazz bands. I think I mentioned to you that Mike Pavlik said she is simply one of the nicest, most talented students he's ever worked with. She's going to study aerospace engineering. So you hear something like that, and I'm always triggered to think about, what was it along the way? And she said, "Since she was little, she's loved aerospace." And she really got hooked when she went on an internship at the University of Delaware with her uncle, and she said, "Right then, I knew." She said, "When she started freshman year at York, she was into reading and the humanities, reading and writing, and assumed she'd follow that path." But she said, "Over time, she's really become connected with aerospace and will continue to pursue that." She credits her music teachers, Mr. Riddle and Mr. Pavlik, with being inspiring to her, because she said, "I want to be able to have the kind of family in college that they've taught, that they have given me at York." She said, "Being in the marching band, being in orchestra, being in the jazz band is like a family away from home." And she said, "I know whatever college I'm going to, it's got to be one that's going to let me be in the marching band." So I thought that was great. And she said, you know, her parents she credits, because she said they never put any restrictions on her. Not that I recommend that for all parents and all kids, but she said they never put any restrictions on her in terms of what areas she pursued and what interests, and I thought that was really beautiful. So that's Natasha Yarlagada. And Board members and Cabinet, I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you for allowing us, always the high school and other principals, but for me to be able to come in and talk about our students. I know I've taken more time than I usually do, but I'm telling you, we could have gone on and on and on with all the students, and I appreciate so much that you give us the chance to do that. So thank you.
Thank you, Diana, for introducing us to so many remarkable kids at York. Remarkable kids from remarkable families, supported by remarkable teachers, guided by a remarkable community. Thank you so much for all you guys do. You represent your community well, you represent your school well, you represent your families well. Thank you. So let me read the proclamation. Whereas the mission of the National Merit Scholarship Corporation is to recognize and honor academically talented students in the United States, and NMSC is recognized throughout America as the most prestigious indicator of academic excellence. Whereas of the 1.5 million entrants, some 50,000 with the highest PSAT-NMSQT selection index scores, critical reading plus math plus writing skills scores, those students qualify for recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program. And whereas in the fall of 2015, the following York Community High School class of 2016 students were named as 2015 semifinalists, Kathryn Dirkscheidey, Robert Tomaska, and Natasha Yarlagada, ranking among the highest-scoring entrants in the state. And whereas to advance to the finalist standing, semifinalists must fulfill several requirements, including completing an application, having a consistently very high academic record, writing an essay, being endorsed and recommended by a school official, and taking the SAT and earning a score that confirms the PSAT-NMSQT performance. And whereas of the 15,000 finalists, approximately 8,200 will be selected for merit scholarships, which can be a National Merit Scholarship, a corporate-sponsored merit scholarship, or a college-sponsored merit scholarship, all awarded based on skills, abilities, and accomplishments as exhibited through a accomplishments as exhibited through a student's application materials. And whereas York Community High School, class of 2016 students, Katherine Dirksheady, Robert Tomaska, Natasha Yarlagata, have been named finalists by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, District 205, the students, their families, and their community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students for their outstanding academic accomplishments. Let's give them a hand.
Do you want to, thanks, Margaret.
I would like to ask if Karen Krokowicz, sorry, I asked Karen ahead of time pronunciation, and I still messed it up, but again, if Karen wouldn't mind coming up, as well as, is Bill Edwards in our audience? Excellent, Bill, if you wouldn't mind coming up. Sorry, Karen. And I have to say, before I start, I so much enjoy this portion of our meeting where we get to recognize all of the outstanding people who make our district the great district that it is. Now, does that mean, even though our district is great, that we don't have opportunities for improvement? No, that's not at all what it means. And we appreciate when those opportunities can be brought to us, and we can make improvements on that. But it's incredibly important that we recognize we are an excellent district. And the students and these staff members that were nominated by their peers are just examples of our excellence. So first, let me talk about Karen. She's an assistant, instructional assistant at Fisher. She was nominated by Sharon Ivanelli and Donna Dewar. Karen has been an amazing member of the Fisher staff for the last 12 years. During that time, she has been a positive influence on so many students. She has expanded her reading assistant duties to include mathematics intervention and assisting in the LRC and TRC. She always finds time to help all teachers and students. Achievement is always evident when Karen works with students. She does all of this, goes to school full-time, participates in triathlons, and fulfills the needs of her family. Wow, I'm tired just thinking about it. On numerous occasions, Karen has been asked to see additional groups or students, and she always fits time into her schedule. She seeks out ways to help other teachers continually. Karen is willing to learn new technology, new methods or programs, and applies that knowledge to all facets of her position. She will assist struggling readers to help them find a good fit book. She will sit down and read with the student to check comprehension and get them excited about reading. Assessment data consistently shows high growth for those students she sees for reading or math intervention. Thank you so much, Karen. I also want to recognize Bill Edwards, Technology Assistant at Churchville, and he was nominated by Ben Hartman. Since joining the Churchville staff in August, Bill has regularly shown a willingness to go beyond the expected duties in his role, even beyond the school day. Bill works with staff and students to ensure the one-to-one Chromebook program's success. He finds missing passwords, adds printers, clears caches, and gets students and staff the technology support they need to ensure that learning is not interrupted. Often frustrated when technology is not working, that doesn't bother Bill. He responds with a calm demeanor and quickly diagnoses solutions for students and staff. He communicates building needs to the tech group to ensure the school has what it needs. Bill lives in Elmhurst, and one evening, just to go beyond, one evening after arriving home, he noticed a school bus dropping kids off at his corner, which is a couple blocks from its normal stop. These students, Bill was on his bike, and he escorted them home, so they got to their right place on their bike. That's going beyond. He is a constant supportive presence in the hallway, greeting students with a smile and asking how their day is going. Students feel supported and are more willing to bring their technology needs to Bill as a result. He is an integral staff member who connects technology to the user in an easy, efficient way. Thank you very much, Bill.
Okay, that's the end of our recognitions. We can move on to our tax levy. Thanks, Chris.
Well, we have the, from the county, we received the final tax extensions and tax rates. For the 2015 tax levy, we talked about it in November was the estimated levy, and then the final levy was approved in December. And at that time, as you know, we don't know the EAV, and we don't know the new construction EAV. So what we have on the screen, we, I put this document together, it's got four different boxes. The first box was last year's tax extension and tax rate. The second box, there is the tax levy. And as you know, we levy, this first note, we levy for more than we expect in the new construction EAV, because we don't know it at the time that we do the levy in December. So at that time, we did the levy with an estimate of $60 million in new construction EAV. Then the next box, that's what we were actually estimating at that time, what we thought that the extension and tax rates would come to. And that's we, that's this second note here, where we estimated EAV to increase 5.76% and new construction EAV to be $35 million. Then in the gray box, this is what we just received from the county with the actual EAV increased by 11.59%. And the new construction EAV was $34,879. So what happened was that the tax rate, since the EAV went up more than we expected, the tax rates went down more than, or are lower, the tax rates are lower than what we had estimated, because the EAV went up more than we had estimated. And the extension is a little bit less than what we had estimated, because the new construction EAV is slightly less than what we estimated. So this is just an informational item. So the actual capped operating extension increased by 2.45% and overall, 3.12%. So that's it. Any questions? Okay.
Just, just real quick, does this include the reassessments that occurred in the fall? Is that why you're getting the 11% increase of EAV?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the explanation, when people are very unhappy about their reassessments, but you also see that, moving inversely, the tax rate went down.
Right.
And people should be pleased with that, the bottom line being the 2.45%.
Right.
Student achievement objectives.
Thank you. We've had some committee reports related to instruction assessment, et cetera, over the past couple months, due to all the work that's been going on with the ELA curriculum and in other areas related to our learning priorities and achievement priorities. So I haven't updated the board recently on some of the work we've been doing with our principal professional development, so I thought I would take the opportunity to do that. In February, Dr. Covino, Gina Pogreter, Deb Lee, Kathy Baker, and Ryan Anderson facilitated a workshop based on Chapter Three of the book, The Principal: Three Keys to Maximizing Effectiveness, entitled The First Key: Leading Learning. In March, Carla Goldman, Jackie DiCipio, Connie Chester, Dave Beatty, and Charles Brandl led a workshop on Chapter Four of the book, and that chapter is entitled The Second Key: Becoming a District and System Player. Dr. Koscek continues to lead the group on practical strategies for implementing professional learning communities based on the DeFore book, Professional Learning Communities at Work. The focus at the grade-level principal meetings will shift from Dr. Wohl's leadership on supervising instruction based on the Danielson model to assisting principals and increasing the capacity to lead and facilitate the implementation of the new ELA units of instruction within the context of a literacy workshop model. However, Dr. Wohl's work will continue next year as an extension of the August In-House Administrator Academy. Dr. Volz of the IASA will facilitate this activity, which will focus on student engagement, classroom look-fours, and strategies for effective feedback and dialogue based on the tenets of what we call Level Four instruction, which is called different things in different evaluation systems. We, the state of Illinois calls it excellent, Danielson calls it distinguished, but it's essentially what that system considers the highest quality instruction. And so that's, that's a little bit of where we are at this point in the year, as well as a little glimpse of some of the planning about where we're going leading into next year.
I just, you know, want to frame it a little bit for everyone. So we've been hearing the last, last board meeting about the ELA curriculum coming up, and then what, and that is, that is the whole district looking at a pre-K-12 ELA as an example. And so we had representatives from the district, as well as the teachers, who are, who designed it and develop it. And so the point here is that not only will, in the summer, as we heard last meeting, the teachers will be trained on ELL across the masses, but what you're doing here is having the leadership team at the buildings learning these things too, and how to lead with respect to that curriculum, as an example, in the ELA. The Danielson things are around evaluation, assessment, developing our people. And so, you know, that's probably why you're talking about those sorts of things, right? I mean, I'm just trying to give some context for people about what this all means. So it's, professional development is at, you know, every level. So you heard last meeting, you know, how we would do it for all of our staff in the classroom. And then, you know, this is, there's, there's professional development at the, at the building level as well. And it's complimentary.
Right. We want to support our building principals and make sure that they can implement their school improvement plans, provide feedback to teachers, and lead the implementation, because obviously, we think that's an important piece, along with the actual classroom practice that goes along with the, with the new units. And the new units are focused on a workshop model, they're focused on student engagement, they're focused on rigor, and they are aligned with our student achievement objectives. I mean, those things are fleshed out, and we've talked about those before. But when, when I talk about the Level Four teaching, all of those things about student engagement involving students, student ownership, and all of those different things are reflected. So I think, Karen, the point you're trying to make, I believe, is that we are trying to tie this all together, which is, which is the way we're trying to get this to work. So I appreciate you commenting on that, because that, that is what we're trying to do.
Okay, Finance and Operations Committee report. You're going to have to take that one, Chris.
Really, I just want to talk about the student fees. These student fees will be approved at the next, the April 26th board meeting. And so we talked about the student fees in the Finance Committee meeting. The, the pre-K fees are going up $3. The kindergarten fee is going up $3 also. Grades one through five is a reduction of $2, and six through eight is $11. And as you know, the, the pre-K through eighth grade fees are, are the actual costs of the consumed resources in the classroom, and the textbooks are, are over a six-year cycle. And so these are the actual costs that are, are charged to the parents. But, but as I said, the pre-K and kindergarten are going up $3, first through fifth down $2, and six through eight are down $11. So pre-K is $74, kindergarten $124, one through, first through fifth $180, and six through eight $179. All the other fees for pre-K through eighth remain the same. And then the, at York, the only change, all, all the fees remain exactly the same as last year, except for one Algebra II course fee that relates to a Alex program, and I had provided more information to the board about that particular course fee. And so that is really it that I have on the student fees. There any questions? That'll be to the board at the next, at the next meeting for approval.
Just clarification on Alex. It's for the Algebra II, and it's just software for the students. Each student would have to have that software for that course, and it helps a student as well as it helps the teacher in assessing where the student is and, and what, what they're learning and what they're not, and to make, make sure that they're directed learning.
And there's no textbook, textbook in that particular course? The, let me see if there was anything else that I wanted to talk about from that We did the February financial report, which is tracking in line with budget, facility usage fees, those fees have, just, we increased those by CPI for facility rental, and that, again, will be approved at the next meeting. Same with, with lunch prices, that'll be before the board at the next meeting. That'll be before the board at the next meeting. And the auditor recommendation will also be at the next board meeting. So for the Finance Committee.
We also had a committee meeting for learning and teaching, for Mobile Learning Initiative. Okay, thanks. You want to present?
At this time, I'd like to ask Kathy Baker to come up, and she will give the presentation.
Thank you for this opportunity this evening to bring some information regarding our younger learners and the need for technology. We'll be focusing on K to five tonight. I love the picture that is on this first page. These are some of our young students at Fisher. This was one of the first days that we had Chromebooks out in our elementary buildings, and they came in the summer, during summer school, and the engagement started right away. They're writing papers digitally in the cloud to share with their teacher from day one. It was a very exciting time, and we have the principal from Fisher, Jane Bailey, here to talk a little bit more about that later on. Everything we do with technology does try to follow the district strategic plan goals. So we're talking about using technology for assessment, both formative and summative, and also, of course, increasing student engagement. We developed a MLI at 205 conceptual framework early last year, and we continue to follow it. And it's about building that capacity for students to act independently, the power and ability to think critically and draw conclusions, and the opportunity to create, collaborate, and communicate with others. This supports a self-directed, deeper model of learning throughout our classrooms. This past fall brought a lot of learning with technology to our grade six to 12 classrooms. This was our first year of one-to-one, and it's really been rolling very, very quickly to change that environment to a true digital learning place. We've had one-to-one with Google Apps for Education, moving quickly to our students thanks to the support of our ITCs that are in our middle schools and our high schools to help coach the teachers along, along with MLI Elmhurst D205 University coursework, which are actually led by our ITCs and developed. Integration is across all of the curriculum areas, which means that all of our coordinators from the district, all of our staff are really helping to implement. And of course, it's the first year of our Technology Services, Services Internship Program, which we're really proud of. If you ever get a chance to stop over at York to see our students, the first line of support for our Chromebooks. This was a very exciting day. This is March 4th, the Institute Day that was just about a month ago. And our building principals at the middle school level, along with the ITCs and their staff, developed about 40 different sessions. So it was teachers leading teachers, things that they discovered worked well in their classroom for instruction. All of the class sessions were led by our staff, except for one, which was led by actually our students from the computer lit class. They taught teachers some of the first principles of programming, which was very exciting as well. But one of the pivotal points here is that we had the opportunity to invite our elementary staff. Some grade four and five teachers, along with some library media specialists and gifted teachers, reach teachers, came along to the Middle School Institute Day to see firsthand what the change, that shift in paradigm was, and how the teachers thrived in a digital environment, how they really began to share and collaborate more than we ever could imagine. This year was a big year also for our elementary buildings. Grades four and five piloted Google Apps this time last year. So this fall, all grade four and five students received Google Apps accounts, which meant that they could start collaborating and sharing in the cloud as well. They also, this year, received one card per building. That was a set of classroom. The number was about whatever the biggest size class was for that particular level at that building. So about 25 to 27 Chromebooks in a card for grades four and five to share, to make sure that this was the device of choice. And we'll show some data in a little bit. Grades two and three followed our plan where they got selected classrooms, about 13, I believe it was, received Google Apps accounts for our younger learners, our grade two and three students. And you'll hear a little bit from one of the teachers today on how well that went. These are the brave teachers who were our grade two and three pilots for our students. And I say brave because we weren't sure how much they would be able to do independently. And we were incredibly pleasantly surprised. They really, again, thrived in this environment of learning. Throughout the year, we offered professional learning opportunities, such as, again, the D205 University MLI courses, which were offered to all of our staff, not just our six to 12, but we had a lot of elementary buildings getting their feet wet with some training in those arenas, as well as that Institute Day and a variety of other conferences and opportunities throughout the area. One of the bullet points here, talk about ed camps. And ed camp is where teachers come, and the agenda is created right there on the spot. So it's really directed learning for what the teachers need for that day. And we're hosting Ed Camp Chicago, which will bring about 300 teachers from around the DuPage and other county areas to Churchville. Ben Hartman and Gina Pogreter were a big part of getting that started. So that'll be very exciting, and that's this Saturday. This is the data that we received after sending out a survey to our grade four and five teachers. The first question asked, how often were you able to use the Chromebooks for this pilot? And we were happy to see that all of the teachers that responded were able to use the Chromebooks. What we really saw in the data is that any chance they got, they grabbed it. One thing I learned about that one area that says "other" is to not give the choice to people on a survey because otherwise they think about it, I think, a little bit too much. And what that said was that, well, sometimes we only have the opportunity to have the Chromebooks every other week. So it was still a matter of really wanting to get those Chromebooks into the hands of the kids, but they weren't always available to them. The second question is a simple question asking if they are in favor, if our grade four and five stu, teachers rather, are in favor of bringing one-to-one Chromebooks available to the students throughout the year. And as you can see, it was over 97% yes. And this is from about 34 respondents, which is about a little under half, I believe, of all four and five staff. These are some of the comments that we received from the teachers. It was all about increasing engagement, really helping the students be able to revise and edit their writing, which is a big part of ELA right now. They found the voice activating capabilities very useful in Google Apps, where it was voice to text rather than using keyboarding skills. The speed and the ability to log on within eight seconds and the battery length, they were all mentioned. And the ability to really become self-directed learners and personalized learning was really in the hands of the teachers. And we, they really appreciated the technology and the ability to move a little bit faster in that differentiation world. When we asked what they did not like about the Chromebooks, they kind of spun it around, and they said the only problem was not having enough to get their hands on them at all times. One thing they did mention was the inability to print. And you can print from their work, you just have to go to another computer rather than a Chromebook right now for our setups to print. So that one, I think, we'll be able to overcome. And now it's time to hear from the front lines. We've brought a few, two teachers and two principals to talk to you, and if you have any questions afterwards, they'd be glad to answer them. And we're going to start with a grade two teacher from Emerson, Sandy Wenig. And I'm going to pass out something that she'll be talking about in our first slide. Whoops. There you go.
Thank you. Hi. My name is Sandy Wenig. I teach second grade at Emerson School. And just in January, I was informed that I was chosen to do the pilot for Google Classroom. Did not really get my feet wet with it until February, when I signed up and I took the class that was offered through Elmhurst to teach me how to use Google Classroom and got set up. So my students have only been on Google Classroom since probably middle of February until now. One of the problems I have with this presentation is I was told I could only show two other things that we've done. So I had to go through and kind of pick and choose. But just so that you know, from Google Classroom, we have used it for math. I have used it for reading. I've used it for science, social studies. I've used it to just do surveys in my classroom. We've used it for everything. When we don't use it, they want to know why we're not using it. We can't get on a whole lot of technology right now due to the PARC testing and the faces in my class. We're just, what? We can't? So we're, we're beg borrowing and stealing computers to get on. But what you're looking at in your hands right now basically goes along with the new Lucy Calkins Writing Program, which my students are absolutely loving. And what we did was we did our research projects, and then we decided to take it to a published format. They wanted their friends to be able to share and read their books. So we went into Google Classroom. I set up a template for them so that they could go in and create a cover page. They could create a table of contents. They could create a glossary. And then they had chapters to go along with everything they researched. You can see, again, this is a second grade student who has an 11-chapter book for you to now read. And, you know, I couldn't put all the pages up here. They wouldn't let me. They said I had a time limit on how long I could speak. But this student just took it and ran with it. And this is one of my stronger students, but my stronger students, my middle students, my weaker students could not wait to get on that computer and go in and put in all their information so that their friends could then read it. Were there glitches along the way? Absolutely. I had to say to Kathy, okay, I need to get some pictures in there. What formats am I able to use so that they can go in and put pictures in? Well, just give me your topics. Everyone got to choose their own. So we had animals. We had space. We had, we had everything under the moon in there, severe weather. I can't give you a topic so that you can make a folder of pictures. So she was able to give me a website that I could use, and I thought, this is not going to work. They have to click on this website, copy, paste, put it in here. Oh, yes, it did. I put the link in. I gave them one day's instruction. They were good to go. They put in all the pictures. They did all the editing. They did all the typing. The great thing about Google Classroom was with Lucy Calkins, you need a conference with the students and let them know, here's what you're doing well with, here's what we need to work on. Can you put this in? Can you add this? Twenty-four students, I don't have a whole lot of time to get to everyone. I can now take this home. And for a student like this, who's really, he's a go-getter. He can, you know, guide his own learning. I was able to put comments on each page and go back and say, I see you're missing a few capitalism punctuation. I see you have a quote, but I don't see quotation marks. You might want to try putting a better conclusion on here. You might want to try adding an opening on this page. And I can put that on there and then explain to them, you see comments on there. When you fix it, click it, so that I can go back and check and make sure you did that. Beautiful. It was done for him. So I had my conference with him at night in my bed while I was watching Dancing with the Stars. But then he could do that when I went in, and I was able to work with my needier children more one-on-one. So this program was just fantastic. And you can see from their sample or his sample, it's amazing. I can't believe a second grader did this, let alone came out of my classroom. And all the kids have this. So that's one sample I have. Thank you. And then the other one I chose was just something real simple. We were learning about fractions. So I, we created the template you see on one side, and it just says, I want them to show me a half, three fourths, two thirds, four fourths. Make that for me. And this is just the drawing program. And then I explained to some of the kids that, you know what? You know the real basics of fractions, so when you get to the bottom ones, can you give me something a little harder? Instead of two thirds, giving me three pictures and coloring two, show me an extended version of two thirds. So this was just a real quick assessment piece for me. Took five to 10 minutes for me to go in, explain to them what they needed to do. They logged themselves on. They get going. And then I can go home that night and say, okay, who's got fractions and who doesn't? Who can extend fractions and who really couldn't? So it was a real quick look for me. Again, then I can take it home, have Dancing with the Stars on, and still do my assessments from there. So my students love Google Classroom. My big complaint is, I want the Chromebooks, and I'm only in second grade. So if they can get to us anytime soon, that would be great. And my kids would like to ask for them too. Thank you.
That would be next, Karen. We hope you get a pilot of Chromebooks to grade two. And again, you can see this is just great not just for the...
Not just for the person who created, but this can now be shared in the classroom either electronically or in the paper print version. So I'm just going to go back. Our next speaker is a fifth grade teacher who has had the Chromebooks, and he's from Hawthorne School. This is Brian Hobbs.
My name is Brian Hobbs. Teach fifth grade over right here at Hawthorne. I actually started, was in the pilot program for the Chromebooks, so I had them a little bit of last year, too. And they have been really amazing. I think you can already tell from our excitement as teachers how engaged we are in it. It's the same for our students. And I know one of the district's big goals is engagement. And I've seen that the most from my, I think, needier students. Just today, I was doing a, what's called a dot share, so it's just a board of anonymous posts, and they really have no reservations about writing or sharing that way, being anonymous. And you really don't think about that, that often when you're asking for ideas in class, but these are the kids that never raise their hands. And, you know, they just send out some really, really good thoughts and get comfortable sharing, and it really brings them to life. And that's just one of the most amazing parts about this technology is the engagement it goes for them. And then the kids that are, are, you know, your higher students, your reach students and stuff, they are equally engaged because they find a way to push you and the computer as far as it can go. So, so the engagement piece is huge there. As, you know, my colleague said, the assessment piece is just amazing, so quick. Tomorrow, I'm going to be watching my kids draw heat transfer, so I can actually watch each one of them as they draw it to see, you know, if someone's kind of just guessing, throwing arrows out wherever, but, you know, I can see that. I get that immediate feedback, so I can change my instruction right away. And next year, with our new ELA curriculum coming out, a lot of it, from what I'm told, is based in digital resources as well. So having, each student having this computer right away in the classroom every day would just be amazing for that. I can tell you that. I do have a student that is using a regular laptop in my room while the other ones are using Chromebooks, and the difference is just kind of mind-blowing. I will be, you know, I could be halfway through what they need to be doing while the other one's just logging on and just getting into the place where I need it. So the Chromebooks have been just amazing. And again, it's just not having enough for everybody right now. In fifth grade, I know we're a little bit closer, and I think it would just improve productivity, engagement, and just students' learning overall. So I really think it's almost essential for us to get those as, as going as soon as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll hear from Principal Jane Bailey from Fisher School.
So that was a brilliant segue because Fisher is one of the happiest places on earth right now. Yes, we all know that Fisher has some challenges, but with challenges often come opportunities. And our opportunity this year was the fact that we inherited 96 slightly-used Chromebooks from Churchville. They'd been bought the previous year with Title I monies, and because the district was then assuming responsibility, those machines could not actually stay in the building. So they came to the next Title I school, so we are one-to-one in our fifth grade now, which is amazing. And I think, when I think about what's changed as a result, a couple of our teachers were pilot teachers last year, so they were ready to begin with the kids when the machines actually arrived. But we really have a way to differentiate for kids. So a great example of that happened, again, this is Lucy Calkins writing. They're preparing to write opinion pieces, and the teacher structured a couple of activities for the kids to formulate opinions. Bilingual class, a lot of kids in different stages of language proficiency. And so she found a variety of resources, and each student had an article to read in English or in Spanish, and had to come up with three reasons why animals should or should not be kept in captivity based on these articles. And then they all entered their information in one Google Doc, so everybody could see what everybody else is writing. Nobody could repeat, so you had to think differently. Highly engaged kids, nobody opting out, everybody involved, sharing ideas with each other. You know, this week, we have all of our fifth graders in the classroom taking the PARC test on their Chromebooks, just like the middle school kids do. So the opportunity really is for the kids to be just a little bit more proficient when they move on to the middle school with the one-to-one initiative. So it has been amazing. So thank you to the administration and the board for the vision to bring one-to-one to the district.
And next, we'll hear from our principal from Jackson School, Ryan Anderson.
Well, good evening, Elmhurst Community and our Board of Education, and Dr. Maury and our... administrators. First of all, thank you for this investment that you've made in our students. Just over a year ago, Jackson School, we began this exciting journey into Google with students in the fourth and fifth grade, and they acquired their Google accounts. It's been a really exciting time for our teachers, for our students, as we planned in a variety of ways how to effectively engage with them in very student-driven ways. And I want to give the credit for the success that we've had at my building to my teachers. All of my fourth and fifth grade teachers were willing to join me in this endeavor with the Google Pilot as we began this process into the world of Google Apps for Education. And they really have accomplished much. Just wanted to provide you with a few various examples of how our students have used these tools. So some examples in the Google Apps. For example, students had to write a shared narrative work in which they wrote together, both synchronously and asynchronously, in creating a mystery type of product. And so it was very engaging for them as they were writing because students could take the story in different directions based upon students' individual or shared ideas that they might have. As a second example, for writing informational pieces on national parks, my fourth graders were integrating both their research with descriptive details and some pictures to produce just very refined quality pages with tables of contents and things that just look very professionally done. And a final example, recently, fifth grade students had been researching on the Roanoke colony and the various theories about Roanoke and what caused it to vanish. And as a creative way of trying to engage them in these types of ideas, students used Google Slides in order to develop storyboards as they were trying to create a graphic novel type of design in small groups. And so these graphic novels were trying to showcase the prevailing theories on the colonies while still being able to write and draw with fictional characters with their own designs. So again, trying to integrate many different ideas in that way. There have also been some cool times when students have very appropriately used Google Apps for other valuable purposes that weren't related to classroom assignments. Just a couple of examples here. While studying a unit in mathematics, one student just created a document where she had written some of her own math questions, the types of things that she might find on a math assessment. And she would design those and then, because she could, of course, then log in from her home computer and then study these at home, so she could really kind of self-assess herself and see where she was at in the learning process. Another example, one student was creative and wrote some riddles about school rules in sort of a poem-style fashion that he then shared using Google Docs with his classmates and teachers. And one other very neat example that I think just really speaks to the culture at Jackson, there were fourth grade students who had used Google Docs to kind of very positively and productively create rules regarding the playground and recess, emphasizing respect and safety and how they were going to work together. And particularly, though, how they were going to link with their first-grade buddy classroom, first-grade partners in terms, all right, how are we going to teach them? How are we going to reinforce this for them? And they'd all labeled this out on a Google Doc shared with each other. So it was really cool. Among the neat ways that Google Accounts have made learning engaging for us and communicative for the students is how they can work together, of course, on the same products at the same time or at different points in time, as others have kind of articulated. They can give comments to each other. They can give feedback to each other. And it's so neat when you see some of the comment discussions going along the side, and you can tell how highly engaged they are in those academic processes. Earlier this year, as Kathy mentioned, we were very fortunate to be provided with a card of Chromebooks for our fourth and fifth grade classes. They are used continually. We have a Google Calendar to keep track of who's going to use them. Every single day, that Google Calendar, the Chromebooks are going somewhere within the fourth and fifth grade classrooms. And those products, those machines are just so useful. Students can start up and log out so efficiently. Teachers can plan and organize the learning activities that they have for students, complete with different resources that students can access. Students can connect then to webpages provided to them and allow them to be able to link together the information from their courses with these external sources, so thereby really, really working on rigorous learning standards. And teachers, I want to emphasize this, teachers have an oversight of the students' Google accounts through an application called Hipara. And it really helps to show how, and allows for a 24/7 potentially supervision, which actually she was highlighting certainly, and a control of potentially shared documents, as well as then that feedback that teachers can provide to their kids. Students have definitely liked when teachers have utilized that formative assessment quality. And that was mentioned as well, how they can come into the room, be on their Chromebooks, and within a few minutes, a couple of quick questions are being asked. And students and teachers can see in unison what's being learned, maybe where there's a little bit of gap. And in talking with my teachers, part of the reason why we think the students really like that community aspect with the Chromebooks is, you know, they realize my answers are being viewed by my peers. And you know, it's so interesting to hear the teacher say, well, yeah, they know we're going to view them, too, but we think it's much more meaningful for the kids, and they hold themselves to a higher accountability when they know that their peers are going to be seeing what they're answering and can have feedback on that. Students have loved the Chromebooks for all of these different reasons. And to some of the other points, when they know they could use the Chromebooks over the laptop computers in the room, it's either, yes, Chromebooks are... Oh, okay, laptop computers. I've had several teachers who have already participated in the district's MLI one-to-one class and looking forward to the advanced courses that are to come. Some teachers have already set up the Google Classroom. But again, the limited number of Chromebooks we currently have has had us running into a little bit of a block, and sometimes they have to run off copies of things that if we had the one-to-one Chromebooks, wouldn't quite be necessary. So in concluding my comments, I definitely want to thank David Smith, Kathy Baker, and their teams over this past year, as they've helped us to really build a great foundation, visioning with us what this would look like, how this could be used effectively in classrooms, how the resources could be available to us and utilized, and the multi-year plan for seeing this through. We're very, very excited for the upcoming years, and we know how our students are going to benefit in a number of ways. Thank you so much.
And I think they deserve a round of applause because without their action and support, we would not be where we are, for sure. So thank you. Not just the principals who are here, but all of our principals, K to 12, UC to 12, I should say, as well as our staff. They're the ones who really make it happen in the classroom. Okay. So now, we're looking at about this time last year, we had predicted what we would like to move forward with this spring, and we're changing it a little bit. Last year, we had thought we would be asking for one-to-one Chromebooks for grades, starting in grades four and, of course, going all the way up to grade 12. And this would help us to increase our devices in our K-3 classes because we'd be able to push the current student laptops down. And we talked about adding additional ITCs. And that, of course, would mean we'd have to reassess our tech service internship because with more Chromebooks, we probably would need more hours of support from our students. But when we look at where we are right now, what we'd like to recommend is thinking about one-to-one Chromebooks, starting with grade five in our elementary buildings, and then looking at a two-to-one model in grade four. And what that means is that each classroom would have about half of a number, if they have 26 students, they'd have a cart of 13 Chromebooks in their classroom. So they could either group students to be one-to-one, so I'm working with this group, and they've got Chromebooks, or I could partner with my teacher next door, and I've got all the Chromebooks today, and then I'll move them over to you tomorrow. And this way, it would let us continue our support for our one-to-one classrooms in grades five to 12, and then start to reassess and see where grade four would like to be in the following year. Throughout all of our implementations, of course, we're going to continue the evaluation process to make sure that MLI is being implemented as intended, that we've got the support in place as we had predicted and planned. And where are we on the SAMR model? That's that substitution, augmentation, modification, and redefinition of what our instruction can look like. Year two and three would follow to be the same so that we could continue to collect the data to know where to move forward in this changing environment. So here's just a quick timeline. Again, at Camp Chicago is a big piece. We have 50 of our teachers attending, giving up their Saturday to attend the event, as well as teachers from other districts. And then we start our summer mobile learning and implementation professional learning programs. We have one that just started last week. Our MLI 100 just started, and it's filled. And we predict that that's going to happen throughout. We're also going to be offering additional courses. Deb Lee is heading it up, working with Michelle Fitzgerald, so that we take advantage of blended learning and online learning and give our teachers an opportunity to learn in that format as well. So this is the recommendation, to continue with future-ready classroom professional learning, to continue at increasing our ratio of device to student by bringing enough Chromebooks to be one-to-one in grade five and two-to-one in grade four. And now, I'm going to turn it over to David Smith.
I don't know why everybody gets to talk about the fun stuff and I get to talk about the money. I don't understand. We'll have to renegotiate for next time. But it was great to hear all the wonderful things that are going on in schools. You know, it's been a long road in Elmhurst and, I think, other districts to, you know, build the infrastructure and get ready for this, and then bring in some devices and work our way through. So it's good to see and it's great to hear the enthusiasm from the class, you know, from the schools and from the teachers and the administrators and the students, because I think that validates what we've been working on for all these years. But, you know, things cost money, so I'll summarize a little bit here. This slide really just is meant to, this is actually for York. I wanted to illustrate, again, it's just estimate, it's really just an illustration of what the York Chromebook cost would be for families. Feels a little bit out of place because they're talking about K-5 in this presentation, but I did want an opportunity to mention this now because in a couple of weeks, we'll be coming back with some recommendations for the Board to approve. And this just illustrates, again, that when you compare what the district is providing to York High School students from a value standpoint, it really does stack up pretty well on the retail. And this is, I literally went to Dell's site and got all the discounts I could from their site. And also looked at their support programs. I looked at their, of course, if you buy a commercial or retail device of any kind, you're going to be paying for repairs that are non-warranty repairs, you'll be paying, like if you have your iPad fixed or your iPhone fixed, it's going to cost you more, right? A Chromebook fix would cost you more in the market compared to our District 205 TSI class, which is parts-only, no labor. So it illustrates that we're still quite competitive, and our families are getting a good value with the York Chromebooks. This summarizes at a high level some of the costs. I know it's a lot of numbers, but I really wanted to illustrate that maybe if you look at the top line, the top row, that just shows the lease payments will be, are projected to be lower next year. And that's because really a couple of our large, or one of our large infrastructure leases is dropping off. We'll have a large payment, our final payment made. And so we'll be adding in another lease payment that I'll be talking about next board meeting, but it's much smaller amounts so that it's, there's a nice sort of gain there in terms of cost. The others are just line items of sort of standard technology expenses. Actually, the second row does include some of the carts and other devices that we might need for piloting in K-5 next year as well. So there are some additional costs. Those are purchase costs that we would get into during the school year next year. So the bottom line on the technology expenses at the bottom of the chart shows were maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars, a little bit lower in fiscal '17 compared to fiscal '16. And then some other costs and revenues I wanted to share, Kathy mentioned on the first row. The professional learning cost dropped significantly, and I'm not probably the best person to explain why, but I think in the end, what we did was we transferred, the expenses from FY '16 were actually professional learning dollar expenses that we paid people for their time to attend classes during the summer and so on. And this, I believe there's a change in approach where teachers are actually earning credit towards step and lane changes as their compensation for the training. And so there's less actual cash payments made, but more of an earning salary and lane change, if that's... Okay. So that's not to show, there's not that much of a drop in professional learning going on. It's just the way it's compensated has changed. And then the other two rows are really just placeholders. I wanted to remind the Board and remind the community that when you look at the, if you wanted to consider the mobile learning and implementation as a program cost, those staff costs we added in a couple of years ago. We committed to instructional tech coaches. We committed to a 0.6 TSI teacher. If you may recall that we added one technician to my support team. And also, the district or the Board contributed some of the costs to bring those positions into play. So those two rows that add up to about $550,000 or whatever that amounts to, just represent, we're acknowledging that we've brought those costs in with staff to help, you know, support the program. And then the revenue is just showing the $50 technology fee that we've had for years now, and that revenue, you know, comes back in to help offset some costs. So the bottom line is the program overall for the technology department, but also professional learning and some of the staff costs with the revenues are coming a little bit under for fiscal '17. I would like to say that, looking ahead one more year, though, with the lease cycle, and depending on what we decide to do for the grades, you know, two, three, four, so on, for next year, that costs could come back up again to the $3 million mark, but it still is within the Board's target set or the target level that we set to not exceed. So this year, we're actually somewhat under. And then I'm anticipating that with the lease cycle and maybe some other, depending on what the deployment plans might be for fiscal '18, it might look a little different, but it still would not exceed the target level that the Board set a couple, last year. That is it. So if you have any questions about the budget or the plans for K-5 next year, we're here to answer your questions.
And just one thing I'd like to add is, as I said, it's the teachers, it's the principals, the district office team, and that includes Michelle, Deb Lee, David Beatty, Debbie Wright, Arianna Leonard, and Connie Chester. It's everybody working for the learning process for our students. It's really changed from being about the technology and the device to what do we need to make our students ready for their future, as well as increase that engagement and give them the opportunity to formatively assess and adjust their learning as the children need, based on the children's needs.
Well, first off, yeah, I would really like to thank everyone who's part of this process. It is so wonderful to see the teamwork, that we're, you know, everyone's working together so well. You know, two meetings now, we're talking about ELA across the district at all levels. And, you know, of course, mobile learning initiative implementation, this whole, how do we, how do we look at students' learning and teachers' teaching differently in the classroom that we've been trying to do now for several years? So, you know, thank you to everyone, really. The teamwork and the working together through everything, being open and creative and loving it, it is noticed and appreciated, so thank you. So first off, thanks to our District 205 Foundation for supporting this initiative as well, all of our PTAs and our community. So, I mean, big thank you to everyone here supporting this effort. A couple questions that I have, and I think, Mr. Hobbs, right? Yeah. I really want to highlight how creative we are, how you have been, how we will be in the district, trying to get all of our students engaged. And I really thought that that was a very good thing for you to highlight, because we're always looking at, you know, building confidence. You know, it's the soft skills as well as the content areas. And so I thought that was a really great thing to think is important to share with us, and so I wanted to make sure that we highlight that even more.
Thank you. And I also left out that I started a newspaper at Hawthorne, and we, they write all their articles strictly on the Chromebooks, do the research through the Chromebooks. They've sent surveys out to the student body. And it's not, you know, the most boisterous kids in my, in that newspaper. It's definitely some of the quieter kids sometimes, and they're just writing these great articles that, you know, you never thought would write. So it's definitely, definitely for those kids, as well as, you know, the higher kids who can push the technology, but definitely that engagement piece.
Great. So they are learning their own voice.
Absolutely.
Which is wonderful, you know, at young ages. So I really wanted to highlight that as well. One question that I have for all of you is, how are the students, as you observe this in more of, you know, the initial stages, focused versus distracted? You know, sometimes here, you know, are the kids going to be doing other things because there's technology in front of them, those sorts of things? So I just thought I would ask, you know, what's your perspective?
Yeah. Yeah, since I'm up here right now, if anyone wants to chime in, please do. There's definitely, you have to monitor, you have to set up strict procedures with them right away, how to use the technology. And they have been really responding well to that. We also have a program called Hipara, which Mr. Anderson referenced, and we can actually control the webpages they have open, and they cannot go to anything else. So that helps a lot with the management piece there, but it's really just setting up a really good classroom management. And you know what? A lot of the times, the kids are just too excited at what they're doing, like writing, you know, the elephant books. My class wrote really cool books like that, too, kinda, and they just, they're just too excited to do what they do with their Google slides and screencastify recording themselves and things like that, that they really don't see the opportunity to go off. I mean, have they? Yes, but it's been taken care of quick and swiftly, and so, I mean, it's just through that point of view, it seems like they're always interested in the work. So it's just about setting up that classroom environment.
I would agree with Brian on all of that, and I think the picture at the bottom of the introduction slide for this team kind of thing, shows a little boy leaning over a little girl's computer, and we can't forget how important that independence is. The teacher is not solving that problem, appears coming over to give some assistance, and we want to see that. What's this one? That is going into fifth grade summer school, so they just finished fourth grade, and that was probably the first day those were available last summer. And so you see kids taking a greater interest in their learning, greater responsibility for their learning. We've had absolutely no problems with inappropriate activities or even trying a game site or anything like that. They're really doing what the teacher has set up for them, and in so many cases, that has been well-designed to engage at their own levels. So differentiation is huge using Chromebooks and the Google Apps for Education.
Okay. So good segue, Jane, thanks. My next point was about, I know that when you look at technology, is it about the technology or is it about the application? And what you all are highlighting is, it's really the content. So it's a student learning, but it's the content that we are, we're here for is to teach the students. And it's just the creativity to really make it come to life for them, which has been more memorable, I'm sure, and therefore more enhanced or longer, short-term and long-term learning, right? And retention. So, I mean, I thought you really highlighted some really wonderful things. Sorry, Dave, but I have a budget question, and then that's my last. And I think it's just clarification or just to confirm. The numbers that we're showing here remind me if they are what we had projected in our PMA budget projections, because we knew that this was initiative that we wanted, that was going to be multi-year. And so I was trying to get a sense of what's new, what's projected.
I believe these are pretty close to what I gave Mr. Walden earlier in the winter. I'll go back and double-check, but I don't think it has, there are some variances in here, but nothing significant one way or up or down at this point. There could still be some changes. I actually, I'll be having some conversations with Chris over the next few days, just to make sure before the next board meeting that everything is, we're on the same page with everything. There might be a few ups and downs, but I, it's part of the projection that was in there.
I too, I just wanted to say thank you. I think Kathy knows, and probably everybody knows this by now, you bring in the students, the students, the teachers, and it just means a lot. It says a lot, because you're firsthand. You're the ones who are seeing it every day. So thank you for all the teachers and principals who came out with their information on how this works. I have one question. I don't know if this is better from Kathy or Dave, but it, can you just re, can you explain again the difference in, I'm going to call this the model of ownership for the high school versus the fifth through eighth grade? So how these-
The actual device, device ownership?
Yes.
I'm sorry, the difference between the high school and the fifth through eighth?
Yes, if you would just remind.
Okay, so at high school, parents or families are purchasing the Chromebooks, they own the Chromebooks. This, as, the district still does have management control over the Chromebooks, because there are lots, there are features and capabilities that are required. For example, hate to mention it, but like park testing is an example, where there is actually an app, there's actually a mode that the Chromebook has to be put into to qualify and make the device actually meet the requirements of the assessment. So in order to do that, there's some centralized controls that we can put in place to make that, to meet those requirements. And there's other apps and extensions and things that the district manages for the school, for the instruction, but it is owned by the students or the families. At the grades five through, and actually four, four and a half, half of fourth grade all the way through eighth, it's district-owned, cart-based storage and charging left in the schools overnight, so the York High School students do take them home every day. And at elementary through middle, they stay in the schools, and they are returned, I suppose in the elementary, they'll be in the same room all day unless they're sharing, as Kathy mentioned, they might combine to share like in fourth grade. But at middle school, the students bring their Chromebooks back to their same seminar room every day, put them back in the same slot, charge them up. And I believe that's working pretty well from what I can tell in the middle schools. I think, once they got the process down, I think that's working well. So, I don't know, I hope I'm answering your questions, but that's, yeah.
Thank you.
I guess it'd be a question for the, for the teachers. Again, thank you so much for being so excited, your energy's contagious. It's great to see you describing the energy of the kids as well and how they're excited. But my question is about this model of the Chromebook being in class all the time and homework. And does that cause a challenge, that this thing that you've integrated so much into the learning experience for kids is taken away for that supplemental effort that we know as homework? Can you, can you talk about that, the challenges there, the-
The challenge of giving homework and not having the Chromebook to work on? Is that what you're asking?
Right.
My students, and again, I'm just second grade, have figured out how to log in at home and go into classroom and work on their books from home. And again, I'm not using it as much as I know fifth grade is, but they haven't needed to have the Chromebook to work at home. They can still log in from a regular laptop or a computer and get on Classroom to go work on some of the same lessons that I'm, that I'm doing in class. So if I wanted to say, you didn't get as far as you should have on your book in class today, I need you to catch up on that at home, they have the ability to do that. I don't ever assign that, being in second grade, I have the children choose to do that. Hey, I went on my book last night and I added in some more stuff and I added in the pictures. They're choosing to work on that as opposed to me assigning that. I don't know.
Yeah, they can access almost anything. If they have the Chrome, actual Chrome browser on their computers at home and they sign into it, their tabs actually that they have on the Chromebook at school open up at home. So it's like almost looking at their Chromebook. The only problems I have run into are students who do not have the internet in their home. So obviously, that is an issue. I've only had like two or three of those over the past year and a half. So I supplement with them with very comparable materials in paper form for them to complete, or I will sometimes just have them, I've had one student of mine working on Excel and Word at the same time, creating the same types of document. It's just not as interactive for me, so I'll assign like a student that would be commenting on their paper on Google, but they will do it in classroom, paper and pencil style, so with those students. And I know out there, there's, I mean, if we go full one-to-one in the district, there's definitely programs out there for kids who do not have internet connections and stuff through, I think, AT&amp;T or Sprint. I think Sprint has a really good mobile hotspot one, and I find my kids went to the library very, a lot, too, so.
Actually, thanks for mentioning that. I was actually thinking about commenting on that. We are investigating a program called Sprint Connect Ed, and it's other districts, especially districts that take devices home, but it would also potentially apply in this case, where, when we'd have to discuss the cost and so on, but it's very inexpensive for a student to have basically four years of data through the Sprint program. I think it's like four years for $100. And then they would have, it's basically a Wi-Fi hotspot that they would have at home through the Sprint network. So it's something that we're looking into, we're in contact with Sprint, we're filling out some applications and we're trying to get more information, but I know some other districts that are doing that. And that's one way that other districts have solved that home, that equity, that equity issue, so.
Thank you all for answering all my questions before I could answer, before I could ask them. You really anticipated. I think it's something we need to be very much aware of, is these issues that are facing some of our students that may not be apparent. So thank you very much.
I had a comment, too. We were talking about fourth and fifth grade, and I wanted to mention also that sixth grade through 12 went one-to-one. It was a huge undertaking with, you know, not that many hiccups. So I want to congratulate you on the six to 12, one-to-one in implementation, which was a massive project. And then we're going beyond that in the same year to the fourth and fifth grade, too. So, thank you, really. Thank you very much.
And as always, we want to thank the board for their support also. You've been very supportive in moving our students into this digital environment, which means a lot to all of our staff.
Oh, okay, go ahead. And thank you so much for getting, getting feedback along the way. I know that it's really been instrumental, but it's appreciated.
Thank you. We have one item on the superintendent's consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove that item? No.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda with the single item on it.
Okay, is there a second?
A second?
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Margaret. Like, I can do a voice vote? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That's four ayes, no nays, that motion passes. Superintendent's communication.
Well, I would like to thank our presenters. Certainly, we enjoy the opportunity when we can talk about all these great things that are going on, and we appreciate your time. And three of our principals that are here, Beth is, you met Jane and Ryan, Beth is the principal at Emerson, and was here to support the good of the cause, so thanks for coming out. The, first thing I would like to say, we've had a lot of recognition tonight. There's a couple other things that have transpired recently that I think deserve some mention tonight. One is we had two national board-certified teachers renew their certification. Carla Talbot, Library, Media, Early Childhood through Adulthood, and Rachel Washburn, Literacy, Reading Language Arts and Middle Childhood. They are in their original board certification in 2006, and they are two of 23 teachers in the district who are board certified and among 630, or excuse me, 6,034 teachers in the state of Illinois who have board certification. So it's an extremely rigorous process that people go through to achieve this, and so it's, you know, certainly, you know, in my estimation, one of the most prestigious things a teacher can do is go through that process and earn that recognition. So congratulations to them. And then we had a wrestler that took fifth at the IHSA State Wrestling Meet at 285-pound weight class. And it's the second year in a row that he qualified for state. His name is Tommy Hilton. And in addition to that, also last year, was the Illinois Greco-Roman Wrestling State Champion and was a National Greco-Roman and Freestyle Wrestling All-American. So he wrapped up an outstanding wrestling career, and I thought that that was something that we could also mention at tonight's meeting. And then one other thing, and that is that our middle school task force met yesterday afternoon and is planning for a full report to the board at the May 10 meeting to summarize its work to date this year. The parent survey is scheduled to be sent out before the end of this week, and the final report from the District Management Council will include these survey results and then be posted publicly on the district website later this spring. So that's where we are at, as far as the work related to middle school task force. And that's it for me. So thank you.
Thanks. Board communications. Is there any update? I have one. The board self-evaluation. We're still trying to get a date for the evaluation. It doesn't look like May is going to work out because of traveling board members and work schedules. So I'm going to put two dates, other dates out. If you could get back to me about June 13th and June 29th. Those are two dates that the IASB representative is available in June. That's the only update I had. Are there any others? Non-closed session items.
Did you want me to?
Yes.
Lead into that?
Well, wait, hang on.
So-
Wait, hold on one second. We'll make a motion first. Go ahead. Yeah, please read the whole, the whole thing.
I move that we approve the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education has received reports and recommendations from the superintendent and members of the administrative staff concerning the number of teachers needed to be employed for the next school term, whereas the Board of Education is required to notify teachers of honorable dismissal at least 45 days before the close of the school term due to the board's decision to decrease the number of teachers employed by the board and/or to discontinue some particular types of teaching service. And whereas the Board of Education has determined to decrease the number of teachers employed by the board and/or discontinue some type of teaching service, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois as follows. The teachers named in Exhibit 1 shall be honorably dismissed effective at the close of the 2015-2016 school term. The notice of such action shall be substantially in the form attached as Exhibit 2. Number 2, the superintendent shall deliver by personal service the notices of honorable dismissal and a copy shall also be sent by regular mail. If personal service cannot be made, the notices shall be sent by certified mail. Return receipt requested. Number 3, the superintendent also has the authority to deliver supplemental notice to the teacher named in Exhibit 1. Teachers? Teachers named in Exhibit 1 advising such teacher of their designated grouping based on status as a part-time, non-tenured teacher and stating whether such teacher is eligible. For recall, if the board has any vacancies for the 2016-2017 school term or within one calendar year from the beginning of the 2016-2017 school term, the notice shall be substantially in the form of Exhibit 3 and shall be delivered by personal service, and a copy shall also be sent by regular mail. If personal service cannot be made, notice shall be sent by certified mail. Return receipt requested. Number 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption.
Yeah. Is there a second? Your second? Okay.
If I, if I could make a second motion and then move- If I, if I could make a second motion and then move to consolidate the two motions? What's the proper procedural for this, just so that we can talk about them both together? You want to get that out of the way?
Okay, first it was moved by John, seconded by Margaret. Okay, go ahead.
All right. It's probably procedurally wrong, but let's get them on the table together and just approve them together and, or do we have to approve them separately?
I think-
I think we have to approve them separately. Okay. Point of order, shot down.
Okay, well, I'm going to defer to Dr. Wall, but essentially, this is a routine thing that we do every time at this time, every year. So in essence, he'll explain it in greater detail, but this is something that meets legal requirements and something that's kind of a routine part of our operation. So, Jim?
I'm actually going to explain this in less detail. It'll be easier to understand. So the resolution that was just read, and the exhibits to which it refers, the exhibits are actually in the form of letters that are given to, hand-delivered to our teachers after tonight's meeting. They'll be delivered tomorrow. The majority of these positions, because of the nature of their employment, they are being honorably dismissed, meaning that they did nothing wrong, there are no performance issues, but because they are part-time teachers, or because they were filling one-year positions for vacancies, they, whose normal teachers will return in the fall, they then by law are released. They are released honorably, and they can be rehired. That is different than the recall that is mentioned. That is in reference to if there were a reduction in force. So I want to make clear, there are no teachers that are not being rehired who are full-time teachers in the district referenced in this particular resolution. If a teacher is being dismissed because of performance reasons, that's under a separate, that's the next resolution, and there is a separate letter that goes along with that. But the majority of what you're reading off tonight are strictly teachers who were hired for either one year, or were part-time teachers and do not have tenured status, and therefore they are released every year. They all know this, they've all been spoken to already, this is something that we make clear when they are hired. So that's what the legal resolution is that you just adopted.
Any, any other discussion?
Just a question. This is something we do every year, right?
Yes, it is. Since the law changed regarding evaluation and teacher evaluations, Senate Bill 7 was passed, and this is actually the legal ease that needs to go along with the law.
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Harrell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes. That's four ayes, no nays, three absent, that motion passes. Okay, next motion.
I move that we approve the following resolution, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 as follows. Number 1, that the Board of Education hereby determines that the teachers listed on Exhibit 1, attached here to and made a part hereof, will not be re-employed for the following school term, and are hereby dismissed as teachers in the school district effective at the end of the present 2015-2016 school term. Number 2, that the President and Secretary of the Board are hereby authorized and directed to give to the teachers listed on Exhibit 1 by certified mail. Return receipt requested. And by personal service, a written notice of this Board's decision to dismiss them effective at the end of the present school term, which notice shall be substantially in the form of Exhibit 2 attached here to and made a part hereof. Three, that this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption.
Our second?
I second.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Margaret. Any discussion? Any questions for Jim?
I think it was included in the last explanation.
Yeah, this is for the teachers who will not be re-employed, nor will they be, they're not eligible to be rehired by the district.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebbner?
Yes, that's four ayes, no nays, three absent, that motion passes. We have three upcoming meetings. April 18th is a policy committee meeting, 6:00 PM. April 26th, Board of Education meeting and reorganization, 7:30 PM. Tuesday, May 10th, Board of Education meeting, 7:30 PM. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We are adjourned.